We on the record?
Okay, we're on the record. Thank you, everyone. This is a regular meeting of the Jersey City Municipal Council. Today is Wednesday, the 28th day of October in the year 2015. We had a scheduled 6:00 PM start. My trustee phone shows the time at 6:10 PM. Would everyone kindly do as I just did and silence your phone? That would be appreciated. President Roloff, Councilperson Gudjuski?
Here.
Ramchow?
Yeah.
Bajano?
Yeah.
Yun?
Here.
Osborne?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Rivera?
Waterman?
Yeah.
Lavaro?
Here.
Okay, would everyone please rise to a vertical silence? Who is the chairman of our council? Ramchow? Yes, I'm Ramchow. Virginia Neen, the H E N, my first grade teacher at St. Joseph's. I taught at St. Joseph's for 40 years. Please stand before a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, the two great kingdoms of which we stand, a nation under God, indivisible, liberate and sovereign.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the council president and members of the municipal council, we agree with the Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, better known as the Sunshine Law. Adequate notice to this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board of the first floor of City Hall, the annual notice, which is the schedule of meetings and caucuses for the calendar year 2015. In addition, at the time of its preparation, the agenda of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Thursday, the 22nd day of October, 4:00 PM, to the mayor, council, business administrator, the local newspapers, and posted on the world wide web.
Yeah.
Council members, we have a little bit of business to do and some pleasure.
I motion that we add 10W and 10X and defer to 10E.
Second.
Okay, the ladies have it. Councilperson Coleman makes the motion, seconded by Councilperson Osborne. That's to add W and X, the only two items added to the agenda. Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchow?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, 9-0. Council members, 10E. The resolution, I've been asked, and I have the pleasure of reading it into the record, this is a resolution recognizing Jessie Passantino, the 2015 New Jersey National American Miss Princess. Whereas Jessie Passantino, a seven-year-old resident of Jersey City, was a participant in her first-ever pageant this year, choosing to enter to compete to be crowned the National American Miss. And whereas to fill the community service component of the National American Miss competition, Jessie Passantino chose to organize a book drive that resulted in a donation of more than 60 books to the Jersey City Free Bookstore, in addition to contributing her time to raise awareness of pet adoption at the Union City Paw Fest. Whereas as a bright, energetic individual, Jessie Passantino is devoted to her schoolwork at PS27, the Alfred Zampella School, after which she wants to go on to become a scientist with the goal of doing research that will help find a cure for cancer. Whereas Jessie Passantino is also an experienced dancer who trains regularly at My Passion Dance Studio, which is where she learns some of the onstage skills necessary to help her compete in the National American Miss competition. And whereas through her hard work, natural talents, and outstanding personality, Jessie Passantino was named the overall winner of the casual wear, modeling, and talent portions of the 2015 National American Miss competition, and ultimately the title of 2015 New Jersey National American Miss Princess. And whereas Jessie Passantino will travel this November to Los Angeles, California, to represent New Jersey in her age division and will compete against peers from every other state in the United States of America for the title of National American Miss Princess. Now therefore be resolved that the municipal council of the city of Jersey City does hereby congratulate Jessie Passantino for being crowned the 2015 New Jersey National American Miss Princess and extends their sincere wishes for Jessie Passantino to enjoy similar success at the National American Miss competition this November. Come up to the podium. Come up to the podium. Don't hide behind it. Don't sit side... Okay. Back a little bit so we get you on camera. We want you on camera. If you can see yourself up there, that's what we want. Come on over a little bit, Dad, and Big Sis. Okay, everybody's in the picture now. Let's get you there. Mom, you gotta move over a little bit to be in the picture. There we go. Let me take a vote on 10E. And if the young lady or someone else would like to say something on behalf of the family, for the approval of 10E, Councilperson Gudjuski?
Jessie, congratulations on your achievements. You're hiding over there? Congratulations on your achievements. Keep your goals high. It's great to think about what you want to do in life, no matter how old you are. I hope, wish you best and luck in November, and the best of luck as you grow older. Thanks. It's great to have a princess.
Councilperson Ramchow?
Jessie, you are a princess. So beautiful. Congratulations and all the best in life. I vote aye.
Councilperson Bajano?
Jessie, congratulations and good luck in the future.
How do you vote?
Council?
Aye.
Councilperson Yun?
Jessie, congratulations. I'm so proud of you, you know, and I'm so proud to represent the Jersey Heights, you know. And also, you know, as a seven-years-old already, you knows how to work with the community. Really appreciate it. It's a lot of luck, okay? Thank you. I voted for aye.
Councilperson Osborne?
Well, all of Jersey City, the whole wide Jersey City is so proud of you and is gonna be rooting for you. Congratulations, I vote aye.
Councilperson Coleman?
Congratulations, a little princess. It's really good to see that at seven, you started this endeavor to be something great. Congratulations and keep up the hard and good work.
You vote?
Aye. Thank you.
Councilperson Rivera?
Jessie? Congratulations 100%, and I hope that you would ever read Mark Twain. And Mark Twain said, "Imagination is a preview of your future, and if you can imagine it, then you can do it." Very proud of you, and I definitely vote aye.
Councilperson Waterman?
Congratulations, Jessie, and I pray that blessings will ever follow you. Keep up the good work. I vote aye.
Council President?
Jessie, congratulations, and as you go to Los Angeles to represent New Jersey and Jersey City, we wish you all the best, and we know you'll make us proud, no matter what the outcome, and you're great. Thanks. I vote aye.
We have unanimous approval of the resolution. I'm gonna put you back on camera, Jessie, and congratulations to you. Councilman Yun is going to present the resolution to you. Do you want to say something to the city council?
Can you see her?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that precious?
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Oh.
Oh, okay, let's... Jessie, would you hold them like this? Okay. Hold them like this. Okay. Look at it. You see? You're on TV now.
Wait.
Okay, you said, look at it.
Good. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
The brothers said he puts it in the...
Is it on table?
Is it on table? Yeah.
Is it on table?
Yeah.
Is it on table?
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 Is it on table? Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Is it on table?
Yeah, it's on.
As I said, I'm gonna abstain on D because this should be part of the budget every year, and we shouldn't have to be bonding for it.
Council President?
I will aye or accept 3D.
Council President?
Aye for introduction.
Aye for introduction.
Aye for introduction. Waterman?
Aye for introduction.
Lavaro?
Aye.
3A, 3B. United States of the D. 3C, 3D. 7, 0, 2, extended by the present's. Bajano?
Not to practice.
Second, we need more exits.
Robert, just a note to my colleagues, we want to vote, we found a mistake with 4A, so we need to vote that down and reintroduce it.
Okay, so we're not gonna have a public hearing on 4A.
Right.
We're gonna proceed to the 3. We're going to the 3 for A, now, how do you call it, a 4? No. No, that's the 4. No. Bajano?
No.
Yun?
No.
No.
Coleman? No.
Waterman?
No.
Council President?
No.
3A is defeated by 0, 9, 0. It's an ordinance introducing the council of Jersey City, Dr. Neves, for the addition of short-term retrograde to chapter 345, our own definition, in our five, section 60, supplementing this code. This is a public hearing, under the name of the law, the change of the year.
Second.
You have a motion by Councilperson Gudjuski.
Correct.
Councilperson Gudjuski? Ramchow?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote for a final adoption of 4. 4B, City Ordinance 15137. Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchow?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
Council President?
Step away.
Step away.
Absent for this. We have an 8-0 vote to close the public hearing. For final adoption of item 4C, City Ordinance 15138, an ordinance amending and supplementing chapter 3, administration of government, article 3, mayor, and article 9, Department of Public Safety of the Jersey City Municipal Code, Division of Parking Enforcement, and Office of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Waterman, seconded by Councilperson Osborne to close the public hearing. Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchow?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
The Council President out of the room. We have an 8-0 vote. We'll get him to add his vote when he returns. Onto item 4D. 4D is City Ordinance 15139. It's an ordinance authorizing the city of Jersey City to execute a month-to-month lease, not to exceed six months, effective as of December 1st, 2015, with 3,000 Kennedy Boulevard LLC, for the use of 29 parking spaces at 3,000 Kennedy Boulevard, Jersey City. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
I'm gonna give Councilperson Waterman the motion because I heard her and Councilman Rivera make the motion, and we'll give the second to Councilperson Osborne to close the public hearing. Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchow?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
Council President?
Step away.
Step away.
Absent for this. We have an 8-0 vote to close the public hearing. For final adoption of item 4C, City Ordinance 15138. Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchow?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
The Council President out of the room. We have an 8-0 vote. We'll get him to add his vote when he returns. Onto item 4D. 4D is City Ordinance 15139. It's an ordinance authorizing the city of Jersey City to execute a month-to-month lease, not to exceed six months, effective as of December 1st, 2015, with 3,000 Kennedy Boulevard LLC, for the use of 29 parking spaces at 3,000 Kennedy Boulevard, Jersey City. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
I'm gonna give Councilperson Waterman the motion because I heard her and Councilman Rivera make the motion, and we'll give the second to Councilperson Osborne to close the public hearing. Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchow?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote for the final adoption of item 4D, City Ordinance 15139. Council President, you were out of the room for the adoption of the prior ordinance, item 4C, 15138.
Aye.
Thank you for your vote. The recorded vote then is 9-0 for the final adoption of item 4C, City Ordinance 15138. Onto item 4E, City Ordinance 15140. It's an ordinance supplementing chapter 332, vehicles and traffic, article 2, traffic regulations, amending section 332-5, one-way streets of the Jersey City Code, designating Bay Street from Warren Street to Marin Boulevard as a one-way west, and repealing the one-way west on Second Street from Washington Street to Marin Boulevard. This is a public hearing on the ordinance.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilperson Os... Excuse me. Coleman, seconded by Councilperson Osborne. To close the public hearing, Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchow?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote to close the public hearing for the final adoption of item 4E, City Ordinance 15140. Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchow?
Aye.
Bajano? Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council president.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of city ordinance fifteen one hundred forty, item four E. Onto item four F. City ordinance fifteen one hundred forty-one. An ordinance supplementing chapter A three fifty-one, executive orders and ordinances of the Jersey City Code to create a classified position for chief, project coordinator, construction. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Uh, yes, Yvonne Bolser. Could someone explain what this is?
This is a title change pursuant to civil service. This is not a new hire. This is...
Well, what would the job more or less on be, besides being a title change? What does the person do?
To the BA.
A lot of construction in Jersey City and I don't see any coordination at all, to be very honest.
It's a position within the construction code official's office, specific duties, I don't know off the top of my head. I don't have to speak with the construction code officer.
The reason why I'm bringing this up because many times drones were down in any part of the city, it appears to be that people can't get on the streets. I mean, so many streets are closed off in Jersey City, it really takes you maybe a half an hour to go something that should take you no more than five minutes. There is no coordination going on. And this has been going on for a while, but right now it's really horrible. I wish there was somebody who would coordinate this, especially with the streets being closed off to the public. I mean, I have no problem with the title if the job is being done.
Let's hope your answers are prayer, your prayers are...
Well, if it's just a new title name and no one is doing this, it's back to business as usual.
There is a person who that will be in this title.
Could you give me the names that can call her? There's a real...
Kimberly El-Sadek.
Huh?
Kimberly El-Sadek. The last name is E-L dash S-A-D-E-K.
But in terms of the traffic going around the city, we obviously know it's a major problem. Uh, we've hired a new municipal engineer. Uh, he's been very proactive in this problem. Uh, we're working on, at the very least, documenting, creating a mapping program that we can post on our website so the residents and visitors of the city can know what's going on. Uh, he's working very hard with those contractors, those governmental entities, and scheduling stuff properly. So there is a coordination of effort here. Uh, it is a long time coming, but you know, I think improvements are coming. But we do have an old infrastructure and there are a lot of things that need to be worked on in the city. Uh, but hopefully we can slowly improve information getting out there and you know, improve the flow of traffic.
I have one suggestion. Uh, there's no need to close a lot of streets because there's construction going on. I find, especially downtown, you have something being done, like a sidewalk, they're cutting down a tree and they're on the sidewalk and it still goes down the street.
I'm gonna jump in here because...
Well, I'm just saying, the street is closed down. Doesn't make sense at all. Thank you.
These are good points. Thank you. Yvonne, maybe if we had a traffic division in the police department and we brought back the motorcycles, a lot of these conditions wouldn't exist.
Seconded by councilperson Osborne. To close the public hearing. Thank you, councilperson Gajewski. Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajana.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera. Waterman. Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the close, for the final adoption of item four F, city ordinance fifteen one hundred forty-one, councilperson Gajewski. Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajana.
Aye.
Yun.
You know, before I do the BA, can I ask a question? Why did it come from the HDC and not from the BA or engineering department?
Why does what?
What's the specific question? Why did it come from HEDC?
Yes, not from the, you know, engineer or architecture under the BA office.
Well, I think this is, you know, requested by the building department. So I don't know exactly what this person's functions are. This is the title recommended by the human resources director. So, you know, I can't answer why, you know, it's not on the, you know, we have different functions down there in engineering and architecture. We don't have traffic engineers work on, you know, on the, as I said earlier, the mapping and hopefully in coordination with the other entities and scheduling stuff properly.
Okay. All right. Okay, I vote a aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of item four F, city ordinance fifteen one hundred forty-one. Item four G, city ordinance fifteen one hundred forty-two, is an ordinance supplementing A three fifty-one, executive orders and ordinances of the Jersey City Code to create a new classified position for road inspector.
Um, Yvonne Bolser, so this is not a new classification, this is a new position totally?
No, this is a new title for an existing person.
Well, the question I have for this is, um, Newark Avenue was redone and is pitted. Will this person go around and inspect what that is done and not hold the contractor off the hook? Because I see some of these roads, even when they're, I mean, most of the work that is done, I'm not gonna say is done poorly, it's not. But you know, Newark Avenue near Five Corners going down to the Little India, that was a horrible job and it just got done. It is absolutely horrible. I mean, when ice and the snow come in, it's not the nature of a road for the following year. So what will this person do, this title of road inspector?
Well, you know, this title, not just this individual, but anyone in this title, will be responsible for overseeing any type of street repaving projects, whether with capital funding from the city, from state or federal grants. They will be monitoring the project, you know, daily. They are responsible making sure it's done properly. And if the project is not done completely, uh, properly, they are charged with, you know, documenting the problems and therefore allowing us an opportunity to go back to the contractor to repair and fix the mistakes that are made.
I suggest you go right now to Newark Avenue. That's just from, um, Five Corners down it, it's done quite poorly. I mean, it really is, it's pitted. And it's not, and it's just done.
Yvonne, we're having a meeting tomorrow afternoon and this issue is coming up. We've been meeting on it for months and nobody's done a doggone thing about it.
I mean, I, thank you. I hate to see, and that's the third time in a row, thirty years in a row, that Newark Avenue has been torn up. Either because of the road or the sidewalks. And it's hard. Thank you.
Second.
One second, please.
Jessica.
Does anybody speak on this?
Yes.
On this title?
Yes.
As long as it's on this ordinance.
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Um, my name is Jessica Abdelnabi. I actually support...
Uh, Jess, I'm sorry.
Jessica Abdelnabi.
Spell your last name. Abdelnabi.
Yes.
Play for the Duke Blue Devils. N-A-B-I?
N-A-B-B-I.
N-A-B-B-I.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
So this new position that for the road inspector that you're having will be all over the city, would it be also for residential or only the city blocks in our own? Is he inspecting in everything, all over the city?
All streets.
All street, would he have an administration that will help him so he won't be juggling, because our city is really big? So just, I, I support it. I just wanna make sure that it's not only concentrated in one ward. I think it should go everywhere because of that. Would it be coordinating also with RRC?
This ordinance basically what's allowing the city to use the title of road inspector. So now we have the ability to hire multiple, as needed, inspectors. Obviously, one can't handle the entire city. So we will be hiring additional to be responsible for working on all the city road improvement projects.
Okay. Yeah, because I wanna make sure that it does coordinate with the residential and the city property itself. And one person would not be able to take care of the whole city. That's all. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by councilperson Waterman. We have a second.
Second.
By councilperson...
You got it?
Osborne. Close the public hearing. Councilperson Gajewski. Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajana.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera. Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the close of the public hearing for the final adoption. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajana.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council president.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of city ordinance fifteen one hundred forty-two, item four G. Four H is city ordinance fifteen one hundred forty-three. An ordinance of the municipal council of the City of Jersey City adopting amendments to the Powerhouse Arts District Plan Rehabilitation Subdistrict to accommodate the adaptive reuse of the historic Merchants Refrigerator Company building for self-storage and the first floor commercial space which property, excuse me, for self-storage and first floor commercial space which properties located at one thirty-three Second Street and designated as block one one five zero to lot one on the tax map of the City of Jersey City. Public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by councilperson Coleman. Who made the second?
Ram Chao.
Ram Chao.
Councilperson Ram Chao. To close the public hearing.
Aye.
Thank you, councilperson Gajewski. Ram Chao, Bajana.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the close of the public hearing for final adoption of city ordinance fifteen one hundred forty-three, item four H, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Chao. Bajana.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Um, just before I take this vote, I'm really happy to see this ordinance pass and have, um, one of the few buildings left in the arts district that can actually be preserved. This will now be preserved and I vote aye.
Okay, councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council president.
Aye.
A nine zero vote for the final adoption of item four H, city ordinance fifteen one hundred forty-three. In seconds, please. Next is item four I, city ordinance fifteen one hundred forty-four. An ordinance of the municipal council of the City of Jersey City adopting the Scatter Site Redevelopment Plan. This is a public hearing. On the ordinance, are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Uh, yes, Yvonne Bolser. I want to say, first of all, I want to thank the city for removing the properties that I knew from day one, when I was here before, that would not abandon properties. So I'm glad you did the right thing and removed them. The second thing I want to say is that there are other properties you're adding to this. And I still think that those properties that are abandoned should be opened up to the public and let the public bid on those properties and not given to a developer. I think that's absolutely wrong, absolutely wrong. The city could put the same amount of, um, timeline on an individual as you would do to developer. And to say that they don't have the foresight to, um, to do that is wrong because a lot of downtown was, was abandoned in the seventies and the eighties. And individuals came in and bought those homes and fixed them up. We didn't have to go look for a developer. And those individuals were held to a high standard because the city did their inspections. So I would like to see other properties in the same way, not to be given to someone, but open up to the public, make, make it fair. Sunshine things once in a while. But in terms of fixing what should have been fixed, I want to say thank you for doing the right thing.
We have a motion by councilperson Waterman. Seconded by councilperson Osborne to close the public hearing, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajana.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
President.
Aye.
Nine zero, close the public hearing. For final adoption, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Uh, before I vote, I just wanna, uh, thank, uh, Dave Donley for a great job he's done. Uh, I vote aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
I would say aye, but, uh, just speaking to one of my colleagues, I think this should be taken to a further step too and further, uh, I'm gonna vote aye. However, uh, speaking to one of my colleagues and listening to Yvonne, I think this should be brought to, uh, we should have further discussion on this in the future.
Councilperson Yun.
I vote aye.
Osborne.
It's very rare that I feel comfortable, um, voting for something and, and, uh, David and I have had many conversations about my, my perspective on, on use of, of taking someone's property. But in, in this case, um, these properties have been neglected for a long time and they're actually impacting other people's properties. Um, sometimes even structurally and, and so, um, I think this is a good plan and I vote aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
President.
Yeah, just to clarify, from the, um, last time this came up and don't know how to, how to say it another way, but we, we literally can't, uh, take it and put it up for auction, right? This is private property. So, um, we exercise our, um, powers of eminent domain, but we have, um, those partnerships with the redevelopers or the developers because they, they put the resources up that are necessary to acquire the property. So the city doesn't have the financial, isn't putting up the money to, to acquire these properties, which would still have to be acquired and purchased, um, providing a fair market price to those homeowners, um, who've abandoned them in the past. Uh, with that being said, um, I think it's a good move. Again, as I've said in the past, uh, this is a positive step in the right direction there. I vote aye.
Adopted nine zero, city ordinance fifteen one hundred forty-four, item four I. Last is item four J, city ordinance fifteen one hundred forty-five. An ordinance amending and supplementing chapter four, paid sick time of the Jersey City Municipal Code. It's the public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Good evening, council president, council members. My name is Christine Barresi and I'm the director for McGinley Square Partnership.
And that's B-A-R-R-E-S-I.
Correct. And I'm here on behalf of the board of directors. They are asking that each one of you please reconsider before you take your vote on that paid sick law. It's, they feel it would be very detrimental to the businesses. Um, these people work very hard, uh, they have a lot of expenses and adding on other expenses would be just too much for them. Uh, they'd like to just work with the city to get a consensus from the private sector in order to maybe come up with a fair paid sick leave law. So they're asking if you would please reconsider before you vote, just to meet with them.
Um, can I just say something?
Sure.
I'm gonna ask the corporation counsel if we can get him over here.
Corporation counsel?
Mr. Farrell, I've got some information today from an attorney that said that Jersey City is a charter form of government. And to have this passed, we would need permission from the estate assembly, the senate, and the governor have to sign it. So, uh, I'm asking you for your advice. This is from another attorney. That this is illegal technically.
Now, sorry, I, I don't know who you spoke to or what...
A very well-known lawyer.
But the, the way...
No, Francis, because, uh, he doesn't want to be involved with this.
This, uh, ordinance is being done pursuant to our police powers, which is an authority that this council has in order to protect the general public from the exposure of having people come to work sick and spreading those, those germs.
Listen.
So it's a, it's a completely...
I mean, Ms. Monahan said that before, police powers.
Yeah, that's completely permissible use of your authority.
To this situation. I'm not against it. I'm just saying that I was told this is illegal. You're probably gonna have a lawsuit by certain people.
That's fine. Uh, but I'm telling you as the council for the city that it's a completely permissible use of your authority pursuant to the police powers.
Police powers.
Is that it for you, Ms. Barresi?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Motion.
Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this ordinance? Please step forward.
Do I have to repeat my name again? Jessica Abdelnabi, sorry.
Jessica Abdelnabi.
Yes.
Please, on this ordinance.
Yes.
Please.
I've been on both sides, employee and employer. I think it's a good idea, but I think it hurts some businesses in a way that, which she was explaining. Because as you know, there's in Central Avenue, a couple storefronts, people are actually taking advantage of having the prices of rents or accommodations of rent that place or lease it very, very high. So I understand that you have the innovation team now going on, trying to make a business and working together. Working together with, um, redeveloping and helping the community in Jersey City really grow. I really do think you should reconsider this in a way that it could, it could please both sides, the employee and employer. I don't think it should be only set on a rule just, um, based on the city and everyone. Cause a lot of people won't be able to actually pay a paid sick day. They'd rather just start going on cutting people, administration work, if that's what exactly what it is for business owners too, right? Correct? So I really think that it should be reconsidered and retalked, some kind of more, more wording maybe to like readjust, it could be fluctuating back and forth. That's just what I think, I see it from both sides, as a boss, employer and employee.
It's a public hearing.
Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Good evening. Uh, my name's Tony Sandkamp. Um, I'm the owner of Sandkamp Woodworks LLC and I've had been running my business in Lafayette section. Anthony, Tony, Sandkamp.
Okay.
And I've been...
No, you was Marlene's better half.
Ah, yeah. Um, so I've been running my, my, uh, custom woodworking business in the Lafayette section of Jersey City for seventeen years. And prior to that, I was in New York City for seven years. And I moved my business to Jersey City for many reasons. Most of them about affordability and, and, um, even with this ordinance, I, I see that still as a good move and I, in fact, it reinforces that, um, move that I made. I look at this as a bottom line issue. I'd always offered, um, sick days, but as of January two thousand and fourteen, along with the Jersey City ordinance, I began paying earned sick days. And even though I have only five employees, um, I did it because I feel it's right for my employees and right for my business. And when I look at my bottom line with the new ordinance, per employee, if they're working minimum wage, it will cost me sixteen cents per hour. And that's if they work full-time all year at a maximum of three hundred and thirty dollars. And that's if they use all five days. But in my own experience, over the last two years, I have found that my employees tend to not, only not abuse it, they tend to save the sick days for when they really need them. And so at the end of the year, last year, all of my employees had sick days left. Now, um, my employees work at multiple times the minimum wage, but that's a non-issue for me because, uh, the ordinance has been able to help me improve my employee retention. I have not lost a single employee since I enacted that ordinance. And the cost of training an employee and replacing them is many times the cost of the sick days that they would have earned over the year. Also, along with that, the increased efficiency of a longer-term employee outweighs the cost many times over. The reality is that in my business, I need people to work at their best every day. And if an employee feels financial pressure to come into work and so they work sick, they're much more likely to make a mistake. And they're much more likely to injure themselves or infect a coworker, uh, which could cost me many times more than a sick day that they accrued, they accrued over the year. Now, I've got a lot of tools in my shop, but earned sick pay has been one of my favorites. Um, I see the ordinance as a progressive way to establish a net positive for both business and family. And I urge you to pass the expanded earned sick time law to help all boats rise in Jersey City and maintain Jersey City as not only a great place to live, but one of the best places to work in the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Hi, um, my name is Karen.
Hi, my name is Karen White. I am with the Center for Women in Work at Rutgers University. This council, when they adopted the original ordinance, included a provision for research to be done on the impact of the original ordinance during the first year it was in existence, and the Center for Women in Work was contracted to do that. We released our findings in April of this year, and for the most part, it was business as usual in Jersey City. There were a number of businesses that reported some positive increases in productivity, reduction in turnover, and higher morale for their employees. And employees reported that their employers were more, they were more inclined to work with them on paid sick days. What we did find, however, was that for low-income workers, they still, even with this benefit, were not able to afford to take the, take time off because it came without pay. The amendments that you're considering today will change that and allow three days for workers in businesses with nine or more, nine or fewer employees to have paid sick days. It's a win-win for everybody. I also have here, the Director of Research at the Center for Women in Work is a Jersey City resident, and she wanted to be here and testified she could not, so I have her written testimony here for you all. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the research, but it clearly shows that this comes with a range of benefits and that it can still be improved upon to reach all workers in New Jersey, I mean, in Jersey City. Thank you.
And New Jersey.
Yeah, and New Jersey.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone else?
Someone going to get that statement?
Good afternoon. My name is Yonel Letelier.
Wait, wait, wait.
Okay, Yonel, Y-O-N-E-L.
Y.
O-N-E-L.
Yonel.
And my last name is Letelier, L-E-T, as in Tom.
Wait, wait, L-E-T?
Uh-huh.
Bless you.
I-E?
R, Robert as in the N.
Letelier.
Letelier, that's right.
That was easy.
I come representing, I represented a business we just opened since April, and for us, it was never a question of implementing the paid sick days for several reasons. The most important reason is for us, the staff, our workers, are the front line of our business, in the sense that they are delivered to our customer, our products and our services. Our business in general provides services that try to improve the health and a very healthy and happier society. So our staff in reality, what they're trying to deliver is build a better society. And since they are the drivers of this, they do reserve part, be part of that better society. The reason, another reason is our staff also, it has a very minimal impact on the bottom line profitability of the business. On the other hand, we have a win-win situation for the business in saving training, production, motivation, that eventually will benefit every single business by implementing this legislation. So I will recommend, I will encourage to you that I support this and pass this legislation because at the end of the day, it's a win-win situation for everybody, the businesses, the workers, and society in general. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it a public hearing? Any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Hello, how are you doing? I'm Daniel Santiago from Anak Bayan.
First name, Mr. Santiago?
Daniel.
Daniel, thank you.
I'm from Anak Bayan, a Filipino youth community group, and I'll keep it short. I just know a lot of folks that are, you know, feel like they're forced to work even when they are sick because they need the income, because they live paycheck to paycheck. So having the paid sick days, even if it's under 10 employees for the amendment, would greatly help them, the community at large, and our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening to the council. My name is Yves NiBungko from the Filipino Immigrants and Workers Organizing Project, and I'm here to also register our support for this amendment. First of all, we believe.
Name first.
Oh, okay, Yves, that's Y-V-E-S.
Yves, like San LaRocque?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, last name?
NiBungko, that's N-I-B-U-N-G-C-O.
Bungko.
Huh?
NiBungko, actually.
Okay. First of all, we believe that everyone gets sick, whether you're from a small business or a big business, you know, you get sick, right? So, you know, we believe, like what others said, this is a win-win situation because, you know, first of all, this is a public health issue, you know? We cannot have workers, we cannot force workers to go to work when they are sick. And what we've seen, based on our membership as workers who work usually in small businesses, they're also the ones who are most vulnerable, right? Those who cannot afford to lose a day's worth of wages if they get sick. They're also the ones who, you know, are easily disposable, you know, if they decide not to go to work because they're sick, you know, either because of their immigration status or whatnot, right? But, you know, if this amendment extends the earned sick days to workers who work in these establishments, you know, we create a standard wherein all workers will afford to be able to stay home, you know, and rest, right? And this is a win-win situation for all of us. That's why, you know, again, on behalf of the Filipino Immigrants and Workers Organizing Project, we urge the City Council to stand on the side of workers and pass this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it a public hearing? Any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
There's a motion?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Close the public hearing?
Getting a call from the Medical Center. Okay, who made the motion to close?
Counselperson Waterman.
Waterman.
Second by Osborne.
Thank you, Council President. Close the public hearing. Counselperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera. Waterman. Alvaro.
Aye.
You have a 9-0 vote for the close of the public hearing. For the final adoption, Council President, excuse me, council members, starting with you, Counselperson Gajewski.
I got promoted there. Working for an agency, albeit a government agency, for 30 years, I was afforded the opportunity if I was sick to take off, anytime I was sick. I was afforded the opportunity to take off for months at a time if I was injured. And for 30 years, I never took one sick day because I was healthy and didn't need to. So I believe that when people have sick days available to them, they don't always use them, but if they should need them, it was always available for me if I got sick. They were there, but thank the good Lord, I didn't need them, so I didn't take them. You know, thinking about that, I cannot think of any reason why this isn't a good idea to allow some people three days paid sickly for, within a year. So I vote aye.
Counselperson Ramchall.
Like I said this morning at the press conference, and I'll say it again, I support this legislation. It's a great legislation. We supported the first legislation, 2013, when we took office, and this is the second one. And three sick days a year for an employee, for employer, I think they all should support this because if someone go to work sick, it could only do them more harm than good. So I think in all fairness, this is great. Like I said, this is a great legislation. I support everyone who work hard on this legislation, including our mayor and my colleague in the council, 32BJ, and everyone else. Thank you, guys, and with that, I vote aye.
Counselperson Bajano.
I'm going to abstain until I find out further information on this, if it has to go through the state and done properly.
Counselperson Yun.
Well, I was a counsel of Rich Bajano, but also they have to understand what they means a small business. And meantime, in the one day, you know, employee has a sick, meantime, the small business person puts you, another employee happens overtime, is the end of day, they finance word, and it's not friendly for a small business community to who create the job in the neighbor. So I vote no.
Counselperson Osborne.
So to me, I, there's the kind of the human right argument and not wanting a parent to have to choose whether or not they go to work or stay home with a sick child, but from a policy standpoint, from a public health perspective, it is not good to have people who are sick handling food. It is not healthy for our city, and so from that perspective, I think this is really good. In fact, I would say, and I know we're trying to have a little bit of consistency throughout the state, but in my opinion, it doesn't go far enough in terms of the number of days. For businesses with more than 10 people, it's five days, and so if the appropriate number of days is five days, it's five days. If, you know, if the average is three days, but some people fall over, to me, the size of the business doesn't matter. There's a public health issue, then it, there should be a consistent number. It doesn't, it shouldn't matter the size of the business. So I would, I vote yes for this, but I would encourage everyone to work to have consistency in the law based on public health.
Counselperson Coleman.
I just can't imagine a human being, not a business owner or not an employee, to expect a person to work all year and never get sick and be penalized if they get sick. That's what that sounds like to me. So I would have to vote aye for this because everybody has that day of the flu or a scar or a hurt, a fall. I think everyone should be entitled to heal and not be penalized. And I think that, like a couple of people said here, the retention of that employee not fearing being sick lets them stay healthy a little longer. So with that, I say, I vote aye.
Counselperson Rivera.
I vote aye.
Counselperson Waterman.
I wholeheartedly support this ordinance, but you know, when you decide to have a business, there's a responsibility that comes along with the business. And so often, we don't take that in consideration because on the business side, we do want to make a profit, that's why we started the business. But when we hire people, we have to take them into consideration because it's the work of the people that brings us the profit. So if the person, if the employee is sick, what happens is that employee loses and that employer loses. So you have to put a mechanism in place where the employer, employee can benefit because if they're sick, because if not, then the business will go down anyway if you don't have nobody to work. So with that in mind, I support this because I don't want to think about nobody having the fear of not going to work, going to work, rather, going to work sick and having to choose that if my child is sick or my mother is sick, if I don't go to work, then I can lose my job. There has to be a mechanism in place to protect those who are less fortunate, and this ordinance will protect those who are really less fortunate, who make minimum wages. So I really vote aye for this.
Council President.
You did. I'm really, really excited about tonight and this vote. First of all, I just want to say in response to Councilman Bajano with regard to the legality of this law, don't quote me, I don't have the exact facts, but there might be some folks in the audience who might be able to provide you some information, but I believe this issue was litigated as to with regard to the city being, using its police powers, and that that was dismissed. Those arguments were dismissed. So with that being said, this is a judicious use of our police powers in that regard. There is the compelling public health issue, and in fact, this is just an amendment. As Councilman Ramchall pointed out, this started back in September 2013. The council, Mayor Fallup introduced and led the way, and the council affirmed it with support and a vote to make Jersey City the first city in the state of New Jersey to adopt paid sick days, earned sick days here. And in doing so, eight other municipalities have followed suit, from Newark to Trenton to other cities throughout New Jersey, but also throughout the country. And now there are 22 cities around the country that are doing this, and in the state of New Jersey, as Counselperson Osborne pointed out, we're trying to find some, make sure that we have some shared, that the earned sick day policy is the same, uniform throughout all the municipalities so that we can have, adopt a statewide sick days, and that's going to be the real victory for working families and working people in Jersey City and throughout the state. The same arguments apply then, that apply now, and actually, I just want to, before I go into those arguments, just address Christine and the SID, I did speak with the chairman today as well. And practically speaking, what was previously passed by ordinance was five unpaid sick days. So the practical cost to the small business of less than 10 employees today versus tomorrow is that today you have five unpaid sick days that by law, in Jersey City, an employer is required to provide to an employee, to their employee, whether they have 10 or less than 10 employees. So the replacement cost of those employees is still five paid days. And now you're adding, in effect, three paid sick days here. So you have the cost of the three days for that employee who's getting paid, and then the replacement cost, it's six days. So the net effect of this is one extra day, literally, per employee, and I think that's a small price to pay when we look at the study that was done that says that the employee who, if they had paid sick days, was still reluctant to be able to cash that unpaid sick day in because they still valued their payday more so than they did having to take that time off because, as the young man said from Anak Bayan, that people today, too many people are living paycheck to paycheck. I said earlier, earlier in the day this morning, that there's the phrase, "The rising tide lifts all ships." And there was, heard a mayor from, I believe it was Minneapolis, Minnesota, talk about the idea that with things like paid sick days and increasing minimum wages and so forth, that we have to move beyond the idea that the rising tide lifts all ships. Here in Jersey City, we have a rising tide with all this development, but the truth of the matter is, for most working folks who live paycheck to paycheck, they're, that rising tide, they don't actually have a boat. have a boat to, to go out into the sea. Most of them are gasping for water and trying to just keep their head above. And so this earned sick days will hopefully be a life preserver to folks as we try to work to create greater fairness in Jersey City while protecting the public health, so that working families in Jersey City will continue to get a fair shake. So I'm really excited, enthusiastic. I want to thank the partners who've worked together with the city of Jersey City, the New Jersey working families, the Time to Care Coalition, labor, and Main Street Alliance. I want to thank our small business folks for coming out. Thank you, Lolo's and Tony, for coming out today in support. And I'm very enthusiastic. I vote aye. Thank you.
Our last second reading ordinance, item 4J, City Ordinance 1544, 45, has been adopted 7-1-1. No vote by Councilperson Yun, and extension by Councilman Bociano. We're to the speakers list, Samuel Gutierrez, Sammy Gutierrez.
Not here.
Mrs. Ball, sir?
Yvonne Ball, sir. In related to the resolution 10U, repairing the stairs for the city, which should be done, I would like to know whether or not the city applied for any FEMA funds? Because Sandy did do a damage. Did you ever apply for any FEMA fund for that?
Absolutely.
To the BA?
That has been brought to their attention. It was included in our submission. Part of our application for the city hall repairs have been approved, not necessarily in writing yet. We've gotten verbal commitments for the basement. You know, they haven't given us a commitment on the stairs yet. It doesn't look like the stairs will be considered because it's, steps are being replaced, are going to be elevated. They're claiming that all the damage to stairs is related to the storm.
True, but I remember seeing the water myself way up there. Okay, the other thing I want to bring, I will have several things really, has to do with the trees. As the first president of Van Vos Park Association, the city approached me as president and asked us to put in non, is non fruit pear trees. And I was excited. I'll tell all my neighbors, you know, across this four hours, to put up these trees. Worst mistake in my life. What happened is the city promised us that the trees will not grow tall, they will only grow wide, and they will have shallow roots. No problems at all. Well, for myself personally, I had so many problems with the tree growing into my sewer lines that that tree, that $4 tree, in terms of bills, cost me probably $600, having people come out to stink out the sewer line constantly. One of my other neighbors had the same problem, and another neighbor had an even more severe problem. She had the tree grow into her gas line from PSENG, and if somebody put the cigarette, we would have had that whole block blow up. I personally have no problem with trees, but when you have narrow sidewalks, I think the city should put it in pots. Because when you give someone a tree, and the city says, oh, it's not going to lift the sidewalk, it did. It is the citizen who owns that property who has those bills. You're responsible for the sidewalks being replaced. You're responsible for fixing the sewer line, and you're, well, the PSENG probably fixed the gas line. But you know, we have this, you know, Pollyanna attitude how great this is, and I can't even tell you the problems people had with those trees. While the city was, you know, telling us, these trees will not grow out of hand. And as you can see right now, they walk around Van Vos Park, around the perimeter where the residents live at, I mean, those trees became monster trees. I had to have mine removed because I was just not going to pay for any more sewer and water bills, I mean, having it replaced all the time. So there's a problem with that. And I don't think we have enough personnel to take care of these trees. In 1901, my mother law, when I went through her papers when she passed away, she has something from her mother, or maybe from even her grandmother. Van Vos Park was hit by a tornado, and all those trees came down from the tornado, and the trees that were planted there right now is from that era of after the 1901 tornado. A lot of those trees probably should be infected, maybe they have dry rock. So here we are going on this thing of planting more trees and planting more trees, and I don't know, to be very honest, if we have the personnel to maintain it. But I am really not in favor in these very narrow sidewalks. From my own experience and my neighbor's experience, we spent, we spent a lot of money maintaining the sidewalks, replacing the sidewalks, fixing sewer lines, and these free trees were a nightmare. That's my point of view. If the city wants to pick up a tab and replacing the sidewalks and the sewer line, fine. But if not, I would rethink how you place these trees in there. I really would. The other issue I want to bring up, and I mentioned this two weeks ago when I was here, I'm very happy on the judge's decision on, there'll definitely be a runoff. But I also want to say one thing, too. If the citizens decide to vote yes for this and to move the election to November, a lot of seniors work the election board, and I see how we give all kind of tax breaks to developers. We would be taking money out of many senior citizens. That's their pocket change. They make money working the books. And that's something I want to remind you if it's the case. Because I, you know, I go to vote, I don't, never work those books. It's a lot of work. But you see who works those books? It's the people that see your housing and whatnot. They make money from this. So, and if I have 20 seconds left, if the $250,000 for the revow, is that the money we have so far? Is nothing more in terms of money we're giving to the revow company? The legal fees, is that?
Return.
Yes.
We're about to go to trial on that matter, so that's the money we need right now to go to trial.
That's additional money or more money?
That's the money we need right now to go to trial.
But what about all the other money combined together? Like, if you, if you need that now, what about the money from the past?
Oh, I'm not sure how much they made in the past, but they, they had some amount preparing the witnesses and gathering the facts.
What's the total amount I'm trying to figure out?
I don't have that with me, but I can get it.
I'm serious. I'll send you an email to get a particular amount. Okay? Thank you very much.
Go online, it's written resolution, Mrs. Ball.
It is? Thank you very much. I didn't see it. Thank you.
Wayne Baskerville?
Not here.
Karen DeSoto?
Nope.
Michael Abraham?
Nope.
Harry Magro?
Nope.
John Bellamy?
Nope.
Yes.
Matthew Kopko?
Matt?
Oh, Matt.
Hello, counsel. My name is Matthew Kopko, and today I'd like to talk about bankruptcy. I'm not just talking about our pension system, or the Jersey City school system that is being run into the ground by unconscionable tax abatements. I'm here to talk about a bankrupt political culture, a climate where people are elevated based on who they pledge loyalty to, a place where having no ideas is an asset, a place where those who work for the government steal our tax dollars for the purpose of buying Maseratis, as was reported just days ago in the newspapers. I'd also like to talk about political retribution. I've been told that I'm an outsider running for the Assembly, and it's something that I wear as a badge of honor, because as many know, if you're an outsider, if you're an insider, you're on the take in Hudson County. And frankly, that saddens me. Here is a story that I have not told publicly. Before I announced my run for the Assembly, it was possible that I'd be running with a woman whose name I will keep confidential. We were very excited, but she called us one day in tears, saying that someone had threatened her family, and if she ran, they said it was going to get worse. She dropped out because of these threats. I, too, have had threats made against me, and your team sent a police detective out who was not there and was not identifying himself as a campaign spokesman to call me a liar. How can this still be happening in America in 2015? Several of you up here who have fallen in line and endorsed the candidates of bankrupt ideas running against me, well, I would like to tell you the following. Shame on you for promoting a culture that seeks personal, physical, and financial retribution against those who exercise their constitutional First Amendment right, and who want a better life for the people of Jersey City. You know why there are so few quality jobs out here? It's because the average person is so consumed with making sure they say the right thing to this or that official, or ask this or that person for a favor to get a job, that nobody is actually focused on growing this economy. The system of political patronage in New Jersey, which you all preside over, is one where the people fight for scraps like animals for their piece of the pie. And while you may not have been the individuals that threatened me, or threatened my supporters that they'd lose their jobs if they supported me, your silence speaks volumes. You know, Rolando, you keep pushing this line about how your tax abatement policy is going to be a model for the nation? Or which one? The first policy, which you all violated and rewrote? Or the second policy, which you all violated and rewrote? Or is it this most recent one? Well, I sincerely hope not, because Trenton is paying for your schools. And when you give out tax abatements, that may help you and the other machine candidates who go right back to the developers for political contributions, but it doesn't help us, the people. You're enriching yourselves and the developers at the expense of the taxpayers. And make no mistake, you're not providing affordable housing, even though you claim you are. You're providing slightly cheaper housing so the middle upper class can afford to live out here, too. Go walk down MLK Drive and tell me you've created a model for the nation. Someone told me the other day that the first condo building in a decade in this city is being completed. This is your plan to put up many massive rental buildings that will get run into the ground? Because we all know people don't treat something they rent as well as if they owned it. It's just that simple. Your addiction to political contributions, while it seems bright and shiny now, is going to look a lot different in a decade when we have 10-year-old rental buildings with rundown lobbies and hallways. Be careful with our future. And when you and Fullup and the propaganda puppets talk about a Jersey City police force that's a model diversity for the nation, well, that's a load of bull, and you know it. Go to NJJCPD.org and go look at the leadership chart. There's not one African American in that leadership chart, and this city has almost as many black people as it has white people. So again, go walk down MLK Drive and tell me you've created a model of public safety for the nation. Rolando, unlike you, I'm not about putting up fences between people because some politically connected person asked me to. Fences divide us. And is that what you are, a divider? You might want to think about that if you're thinking about running for mayor. So when you go to bed at night, remember this. People are being shot in our streets while you go around pretending you've solved the problem. People are jobless because your politically connected cronies are taking the jobs that hardworking Americans and veterans are being denied. And you have made your bed with two bankrupt candidates, one who has bankrupt morals and one who is bankrupt of ideas. I'm Matthew Kopko, and vote column A on November 3rd.
I gotta say something before that, that goes. So I just want to say, Tuesday, November 3rd, vote column B, Hudson County Democrats. I wouldn't normally say that, but I think I'm gonna say that today, on this day. And vote for the education matters team, 1D, 3D, 4D. Mr. Kopko, we've put up with your antics over the past several months. All I can say now is that as Tuesday, November 3rd rolls around, I'm thankful that it's coming around because, hopefully, and I'm gonna bet my, bet on it, that you're not gonna be here after Tuesday, November 3rd, because you got nothing else to gain anymore. And, and your time is up, my friend. Your time is up. Like, seriously up. As of Tuesday, November 3rd, it'll be up. And what I will also say is this, is that, you know, you talked about Martin Luther King Drive. What, you come here like six months ago? What, six, eight months ago? Maybe, maybe? And then you claim to be walking around the streets and you're a man of the, you know Jersey City and our streets? Go back, go back home, my friend. Go back home. Jersey City is for, for the people who, when you come here talking like you think you know our city and our streets, you don't know nothing about us. And you want to take, take Jersey City on? Jersey City is home to people who fight for working families, fight for the people of Jersey City. And we're not some Tea Party Republican like you, a little nutty, a little nutty out there, folks, and has no clue as to what's going on for working families and what needs to be done. You're just trying to advance your own personal agenda. And I'll be thankful when Tuesday, November 3rd rolls around, and your time is up and done.
Vicki Hyman, Steve Hyman, Don Wilson?
Don Wilson is here.
Good evening.
And I'm back. And the story is the same for the last 45 years, coming here, looking for the councils to do what they're supposed to do for the community, especially the African American community. You're putting us, probably putting us back into slavery, the way you are selling our property, not making things available to us so that we can grow as a community. All the neighborhoods are progressing, but the black community. You know, we come here and ask you for the help, and it's the only administration, this administration and Coche administration is the only administration to not reach out for the community to help, especially our community. But you come in now, and you set up to be able to annex us from our communities, from our homes. There's a lot of people who are black and white, who think like you do. They think about the property value going up, I'll make more money. But what happens to the everyday person? They're being pushed out of their homes. There's no, nothing made available for them so that they can grow. Other communities are getting a lot of resources, but especially Ward F is not getting any. And if they're getting anything, you know, it's not going to the local workforce just out there to learn. We have a major, a lot of major developments going on in Jersey City, and we have no participation whatsoever. I'm here because of my people, people who have worked for me for the last 40 years, asking me to come back up and start talking about this here, so we can organize to get ready to participate. Because you got all this work going on, and you give up nothing to our community. That has to stop. And we're gonna raise hell by not doing the traditional thing, not picking and all that there, but we will go to court, we'll do whatever we have to do to make you, make the whole world know what you're not doing for our community. Because we look at it as economic genocide that you're putting forth toward us. These are harsh words, but they're, they're things that are real. We ask for a training program, but all the contractors are saying, oh, we can't hire your people because you're not trained. But when we ask money, ask for the money to train our people, there's no money. But you can give up $20 million here, you give up $4 million there, but you can give up no money to train the, the normal people who are here. You know, and there's always a problem with, with people getting killed. And where you think that's about? You're the shepherd, everybody into Ward F, from all over the city, all the housing projects, you're closing down, you put them all up on the hill. There's a clash of, of neighborhoods. Well, everybody says, oh, the kids are bad. No, they're trying to survive. All they want is some money in their pocket and some sneakers. We want to go, go a little further. We want to see them get a job so they can stop all the nonsense. But that's left up to you. You're supposed to be the fathers of our community. And who, who's your children? It's definitely not the black community, but we haven't done nothing for the black community. And we got two council people up here, and I'm helping that they be listening to this here, because this, this issue will get ramped up, because it's everybody's problem that we have in Ward F. You give out big million, multi-million dollar tax breaks, but what comes for Ward? Nothing. There's no training. There's no decent schools. We're asking for you to start to think about the problems that we're having in our community, because we're part of this whole city, not just downtown here, or the Heights, or Ward A, Ward C. You know, Ward F is part of this community and it deserves the same resources that everybody else receives. I'm just saying this here because, asking for this so we can get a dialogue going, so we can get something started. But we're not going away again. I can promise you, we're not going away. Every council meeting, it'd be more and more of us coming here, you know, protesting about what you're doing. And we could bring media with us, because we want everybody to know what you're not doing. Ward F is part of this whole city, for all the citizens, not just the few people in Ward F deserve help. We want to be just like everybody else. You spend fortunes here in downtown, but very little in, in our community, especially to give us the training and the job opportunities that we need. We can do our own. Somebody told me, oh, we could train, nobody could train us. We could train ourselves. They told, they said, we can't build. It's been proven that we can build. I built 10-story buildings, a lot of things. But thank you. I see my time is up. But ladies and gentlemen, we will be back. Thank you.
Do you want to respond, or? Okay. Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson, so I'll have my aide. We'd like to engage with you. You're a Jersey City resident.
For 50 years.
50 years. 50 years. And, you know, earnestly, come here with earnest, in earnest to us, and wanting to work, and we want to work with you, and see what we can do to make situations better. And I don't think you're somebody who's out with a political agenda to service and for this next, this election coming up and whatnot. So we'd love to sit down with you, sit down and talk about it. My aide stepped out of the room, when he gets back here, I'll have him meet with you and just take your contact information, and then we'll set up a meeting with a couple of the council members to have a discussion.
Well, we would hope that it is, what you're saying, Council President, is a collaborative effort by all the council members to see that something is definitely going to happen in Ward F. As I guys, been here 50 years, every other community has built up except for Ward F. You know, it's gotten worse, and everyone wanted to blame the police, and the police ain't the problem. The problem lays it with administrations, because they direct the police department. You know, all the problems that go forward are based upon what happens with the administration. And they put the police out there, so they got to fight the people, and then that causes problems.
We're working on it, but we can do better, and we're open to taking ideas and sitting down and talking to you and figuring out what works.
Yeah, I'm going to stay here, I'm not going to leave. It's what the guy goes home and says, "Hey, honey, I love you." She said, "Did you pay the rent?" Or pay the mortgage? Do you get my drift there? I mean, a lot of talk don't mean nothing, but it's what we get done means something. Thank you.
I got it, sir.
Bill Revo.
Bobby, I'm tired, you tell me all the years and sit down.
Bill's gone.
I could still get you, Don Wilson.
Peter.
Esther Whitner. Esther, you know where the on-deck circle is? It's right there. Antonette Chess here. Billy Tyari here.
I know I missed the vote on the short-term rentals, but I just want to say my piece on that. What I found in reading the ordinance is that it was kind of very open-ended in terms of how it was written. I come from the perspective of a one-family homeowner, not from downtown, but from the other side on Bentley Avenue by Communipaw. And we've had issues in the past on our block and in other parts of the city where unscrupulous landlords use these housing as rooming houses. Without having language that addresses specifically how that's going to be addressed in terms of fire code, I don't know if the fire department has been contacted and their input, locks on the doors, how these things will be addressed, seems to be almost like a way for people who want to run these rooming houses, a backdoor way, or a loophole for them to do that. So while it might be a good thing, and the money is a good thing, and short-term rentals and Airbnb are here to stay, I think that the law should have been written a little bit more extensively to protect some of us, like the homeowners. And, you know, buildings have their own issues, but the people who live in private homes need to be protected by unscrupulous landlords. The other issue that I want to talk about is the first reading ordinance of the $8 million bond for terminal leave. The $8 million bond for terminal leave that I don't think the city should bond for. We've received $30 million from the MUA, we are spending money on many things. An $8 million bond is not something that we should be bonding for. We should try to raise the cash or keep the cash on hand to pay for that. So I hope that you consider at this juncture not to pass the terminal leave $8 million bond. Thank you.
All right, that's it for the speakers list, council members. We have Antonette Chess, Billy Tyari called in, but apparently he's not in. So we're going to take a balance of business and go watch the Mets win their first game of the World Series.
Sorry.
6A through 6, Z4, petitions and communications. Officers, communications, X7A through C, reports and directors, A, A and B. Please leave quietly. We are to the claims and addendum number one, Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Ram Chau.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
He stepped away.
Okay, maybe someone can locate him, he probably doesn't realize we're.
Danny.
Okay.
He stepped out.
Councilman Rivera stepped that way, Brian?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
Okay, we'll come back to him. We're to resolutions 10A through K, we approved E earlier. Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Ram Chau.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
9-0, P withdrawn. Balance of Business, U through X. Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Ram Chau.
Aye.
Bajano. Time's up.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
9-0 for U through ZX, uh, through, U through X, to adjourn at 7:47 PM.
Motion.
Who made the motion?
Motion, Coleman.
All right, Councilperson Coleman, seconded by Councilman Ram Chau. To adjourn at 7:47 by acclamation. Say goodnight, everyone.
Aye.
Aye.